I wasn't sure if you had a form here. Mr. Goldman, are you all ready? Okay. Being six o'clock, we have a motion to open our meeting.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good evening, everyone. This is a meeting of the Finance Committee. It is Tuesday, April 29, 2025. This is going to be a meeting, a hearing with our school department, and we're going to allow them to open up their meeting as well.
School committee, could I have a motion to open up the meeting?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is being video and audio recorded. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, thank you for coming tonight, everyone. This is, you know, our annual big meeting that we typically have. We don't have a full complement of our board of selectmen, but we have our chairman, Mr. Hinckley, here tonight to ask any questions and chime in. You know, the town administrator, Mr. Jamie Kelly. So we're going to get right into it. Patrick, what I'd like to maybe do first is maybe have you highlight, like additions, subtractions, any, like, things that you feel are, you know, really relevant to your budget. So maybe just like an overview.
Sure. So just for the record, you know, we discussed having a presentation tonight.
Yeah.
It wasn't parting because everyone has the opportunity to view it.
Yeah.
But ultimately, you know, it's sort of a similar story that we've been preaching in the past. Chapter 70 funding is just not enough to sustain, sustain our budget and support the town. They're, at the same time, you know, that aid minimally increases. They expect the town's portion to grow significantly. I think it's four and a half percent versus the 1.2% that they're increasing for us this year. And ultimately, we've gone through and cut as much as we can. Supplies are down. Contracted services remain generally down or flat. And it's the same narrative. We're stuck in fixed costs. Salaries tied to, you know, our collective bargaining agreements and administration. Transportation, yellow bus contract increases, and special ed tuitions have really hurt us, as well as the transportation associated with those. You know, to transport one student out of district costs, you know, anywhere to $60,000, $70,000 something. And then the tuitions are in the same ballpark. So you can go up to $140,000 a student that's out of district. So those are costs. The staffing pattern remained to the extent where we're suggesting to add a sub-separate FTE, which is a special ed teacher, that would be in a substantially separate classroom to deal with significantly, yeah, thank you, needs students that otherwise would need to go out of district. So by adding, you know, $79,000 for that teacher and $54,000 for that van, we're saving that $100,000 per student that would otherwise push them out of district. So that is a new ask. But otherwise, yeah, I mean, we can get into it more as you guys nitpick, you know, specific topics. But we feel like we've done our best. You know, there's been hot topics in the past that we've gone through the budget and we've cut. The supply lines are remaining flat again or decreasing. It's the contracted services and the contracts, the salaries that are hurting the most. I don't know if anyone else wants to chime in on anything there. But it's not an exciting budget year for us. We're not doing anything crazy. There's nothing new. There's no crazy initiatives or coming off of VESR or anything like that. I think it's important to point out, last year, we balanced the budget through the special ed stabilization and prepaid tuitions. If we factored those in again, you know, we knew we were setting ourselves up a little bit last year, we factored those up, factored those in again, we'd only be looking at a 2% increase this year, 2.3% increase. So again, not a lot has changed last year. We've actually decreased in many, many line items. It's just a factor. We don't have that one-time funding to help support the budget.
So your overall increase, the number is 753, correct?
Correct. And of that 753, $133,000 due to additions to that sub-separate classroom transportation.
Before, before the thing comes, starts asking questions, Mr. Kelly, do you want to give any kind of overview of where we're at right now, town-wide?
Townwide, as you all know, I've been saying we have an increase in revenue of about $520,000, give or take. It's an estimate. Old Colony, in its wisdom, sent us a budget which was increased by $347,482. To give you an idea, we still haven't finished with town budget yet. But for general government, $1,629 decrease from last year. Public safety, total increase, $43,373. Public works, $58,446 increase. And that includes over a $100,000 increase in our, what we owe the city of New Bedford for our water. Human services, $49,000 decrease. Culture and recreation, $6,112, which is what we need to keep the libraries certified. Debt and interest went down slightly, $4,000 in change. Joint benefit accounts, which are pensions, insurance, Medicare, et cetera, for both towns and schools, went up $150,000. Total increase for the town, with the joint account increase of $150,000, the total increase is $202,000.
And that includes $100,000 for water from New Bedford we have no control over.
Yep.
So the entire town was able to come up with their budget, only an increase realistically of roughly $100,000 over LY, if we factor out New Bedford.
If you factor out New Bedford and you factor out the joint accounts, we cut, we are $50,000 less than last year.
Yeah, for the entire town.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
If I can add a couple other things, just that I've got to be clear. So again, we're looking level service. I just had to say that aloud. Other offsets that we've tried to do, that we've implemented to try to be creative this year is we're going to use the school rental funds, the revolving account, to fund our part-time custodian. We're using the preschool tuition fund to fund two preschool paraprofessionals. None of those, that hasn't been done in the past. And then again, you know, our food service fund is fully funded. We don't allocate any of those costs to our operating budget. So, you know, we're exploring and getting creative as we can to, without kind of debilitating those reserve funds, if you will, which I think is important.
Mr. Chair, we have to go to town meeting with a balanced budget.
Correct.
We will not know final figures as far as revenue estimates because if we're lucky, because the state will not be done with their determinations of local aid till the end of May, we have to go to prick the beginning of May for town meeting. So we have to come up with our best estimates as far as revenue. And we will be look, we're looking at it daily to see if we can find out and see even a minor trend for increase of revenue.
So we're looking at a $753,000 increase, which is more than what the town is getting. So what do you want us to do? The money isn't there. So where do we go from here?
Yeah.
If we're talking about, oh, so sorry.
That's okay.
Just wanted to finish my thought.
Yeah.
So if we're talking about level services, then let's think about what level services would have been a few years ago for the town, the residents. What is level services at that point? The town has not added anyone that I can think of. We even try to, maybe a half-time librarian for the children's room, I think is the only thing that comes to mind. So we can't even go level services from a few years ago and see where we can come, because that didn't happen. We know the school is added. So I don't know what you want us to do with regards to how we're going to balance this budget.
Do you have a particular number?
Yeah, we talked about a particular, well, the thing is, Paula, we know that 700 is just not feasible because that's more than what the town gets.
Right.
I think we would have appreciated if there was at least, at least a little bit more attempt as to giving us something that is even something that we can work with. Because 700,000, you know.
We received word that it's different numbers all the time, you know.
But 700 isn't even in the same state code. It's not even in the same district. You know that.
But did you hear what Patrick said, that we would be at 2% had we not prepaid the tuitions? Like, we have to keep that in mind because we're going to do that this year.
Paul, the dollar's the dollar, right? Forget percentages. This is what we have for money. And that is it. And if we're thinking about that, okay, where do we go from here? Like, we're just trying to figure out a realistic plan to move forward. If we're talking about level services, we're doing the same thing on the town side. Let's go back a couple of years. Are we still doing the same thing on the town side? Yes. But we can go back, I don't know how many years.
But here's where we're at now. So we're talking cuts of people. That's where we're at.
But we've never added, we can't cut and keep level services from five years ago. Okay, like, let's put it all on the table. The town has not added. Okay, and we cannot continue this, this trend of continuing to spend.
So I hear what you're saying.
Like.
And, you know, not that I don't want to say they're comparable, right? I don't think any of us want to see public services decrease, right? I think we can hold on our heads to that. But the fact of the matter is, you know, we have 1,000 kids in our buildings every day with 140 employees, right? Sometimes, I don't know, I'm going to assume, right, that, I've been over at Town Hall, sometimes there's no one there, sometimes there's a few people there. Daily, we know we're going to get 1,000 students and 150 kids, I mean, 150 employees. We have to provide services for those students.
1,000%.
And then on top of that, you know, we can't control the rates that they're setting for transportation, special ed. You know, I'd love to say, hey, instead of a yellow bus car shot.
We are all at the same point where we got to cut.
No, I understand, but at the same.
Everybody's got to cut.
But at the same time.
We've done that at the town side.
At the same time.
What have you cut?
At the same time, the landscape from COVID has changed significantly. We have students with mental health supports that we need to provide.
Let's go back to COVID, though, right? Because three years ago, we sat here.
Pete, Pete, hold on. Did you want to finish? Do you have anything else?
Oh, I'll, there'll be more.
No, I want, I want, hold on. I want all the questions to go through me. I don't want us talking over each other tonight. Pete, go ahead. Have you done something?
Yeah.
Pete, go ahead.
Thank you. Sorry, Mike. You know, three years ago, we sat here and we talked about your budget. And we talked about how it was not sustainable moving forward. We talked about how through COVID, you guys were using COVID money to add staff. You can shake your head no all you want. Since 2019, and I'm, is it okay to steal your numbers? Since 2019, you've added just under a million dollars' worth of staff. Since 2019, your student enrollment is down 8%. Okay, so in the last five, five and a half years, you've added a million dollars' worth of staff dealing with 92% of your, your students.
But we didn't spend COVID funding on additional staff.
When we sat here and we talked about your budget, your budget was based on getting this fixed amount from the state, which was inflated with COVID money. And we sat here, and it's recorded, Patrick. You can sit back and watch it.
This is your budget? Was it more?
No, they think this is just before you.
That was in this room?
But we sat here, we talked about the staff.
It was in this room we had the convo.
And we talked about how this money wasn't going to be available forever. And you guys were banking on the fact that, you know what, we'll cross that bridge when it comes to it. And we put you to the task and said, when it does happen, what are you going to do? And the answer you guys gave us was, well, we're going to have to make cuts. We haven't seen any cuts yet. We keep seeing an increase in, okay, you've got your contractual increases. But when we start looking at some of these positions that you're adding, the positions that you're adding here aren't always just teachers. They're support staff. And when you start looking at the rest of the town and the departments that are there, there are no support staff. Cuts mean closing departments. For you, cuts means, oh, you know what, we're going to have to get rid of a curriculum director, where most places, that's the vice president's job to begin with anyway. Curriculum director alone, what was that? 110, 110,000, something like that?
We've got two.
118,000.
The academic coaches.
Two professional staffs under curriculum director. There's two professional salaries under curriculum director.
Okay, academic coaches.
So what's the 100,000 in the?
Can I?
So when we sit here and we talk about cuts and you say, well, we need this for the students, we need this and that. At the end of the day, when we factor in your benefits that are on the town budget and the retirement, which is on the town budget, the school department accounts for over two-thirds of the overall town budget. And every year, you guys keep coming back and asking for more. Last year, it was an exorbitant amount when we were, we were floored with it. And we all pushed back and said, no, we can't do it. It just can't be done. And you went back and you raided your stabilization funds. Now you're coming back here asking, your original ask was for another $1.4 million, and now we've cut it in half to 700,000, which is still the biggest increase you've ever had. And we're looking yet again, you're down 8% in your enrollment. How do we justify that to the rest of the town when we can't hire police officers, where we had to actually cut three of them that were scheduled to start last year? When we can't fund and keep our fire department, when we can't even get people in our public government because we can't afford to pay the position that's out there? Do we have a new town administrator coming on board? No. Are we having to share other positions with other towns so that we can try and make ends meet and have somebody come in here? Yes. Do we see any bend from you guys at all? No. What I see is the hubris that you brought to the last town meeting about, we've been asking you now for a year and a half, what's your backup plan? Come with us with a different option. Since then, you have never given us a different option. When we put you to the test a month ago, everything that you gave us hinged on an addition to what Train was doing. I kept my mouth shut. You can shake your head no all you want. We've got the email, Patrick.
What is that project, why don't we stay focused on this topic tonight?
We're talking about the amount of money that the school department has and the fact that you guys haven't budgeted on your budget.
How about we take the temperature down a little bit?
Pete, Pete, hold on.
And just keep on topic.
I don't want to talk about the train project.
No, I'm not talking about the train project. I'm talking about the attitude of the school department, that you guys can get whatever you want because you're the school department. We don't have the money.
There's no ambiguity here. We are trying to come to a solution that works for everybody. There's one person in the room who's getting a little emotional and carried away. So let's get back on topic. Please.
All right, so I just want to get back to, hang on there. The, Patrick, there's, there's two positions listed under professional.
I think, I think we need clarification.
Salaries for instructional coaches, and then there's the curriculum director is separate.
Yes, so there's two instructional coaches. That's not, someone called it the curriculum director. Yes, there is a curriculum director and there's two instructional coaches.
Let me give you like line items, so that way maybe it's, it's, okay, so.
No, I'm agreeing with you.
No, so there's two instructional coaches, and then there's two professional salaries under the curriculum directors. Yeah, what I'm looking at, and maybe, and that's what I need clarification on. Okay, curriculum directors supervisory, professional salary, line item, so DESI codes is the same. Instructor 510010, it's $118,000 for fiscal year '26.
You're referring to the Director of Special Education and the Curriculum Director? Are they both under that?
Are they both under?
Yes.
Yes.
In the detail, though, if you're looking at the detail tab, right, there's a curriculum director that's got their base salary line and then their longevity line. So there's the two.
I'm just, yeah.
When you're looking at school leadership, yes.
I'm looking in the summary. Okay, so the curriculum director is curriculum director and special.
The special ed director, yeah.
They both fall under the same code, so that's why he has an organization.
Okay, that's, that was my confusion, because I did see two salaries and I didn't understand that.
And then just, if I can make a comment too, I hear what your committee is saying. We all hear what you're saying. What's happening in Kushner isn't unique to a Kushner. And I know, Mr. Kelly, it can all relate to all the towns that are struggling, town side, school side, funding. You know, most towns, two-thirds of their budget are the schools. It's not anything we're doing. It's, it's operating a town, right?
And we are part of that.
What, you know, I think we're, we're struggling with is not, again, you know, we, we received the revenue numbers. We know they're conservatively estimated as best practice calls for. And, you know, we've had questions about why do we close out 1.5 million to free cash year over year over year? I don't think we've ever gotten a fair answer on that, or where those estimates fluctuate, that, you know, it's missing so bad that, you know, we're not saying state, use stabilization to fund our budget, use, you know, reserves to fund our budget. But where is that money that if it was estimated closer, that we'd be able to put that into a budget now, town and school side? And then if this is going to be the reoccurring problem, it's not necessarily an expense problem, right? It's a revenue problem. We have no growth year over year. We rely heavily on the state. So when are we going to flip the script and say, you know, maybe the school does have to come down, but how are we going to improve things so that two, three, four, five years down the road, there is opportunity in the town and there isn't just closed buildings everywhere?
And that's a, that's a future problem, right?
It's a map problem. It's a last year problem. It's a next year problem.
No, no, but, but that's not something that's going to solve.
Sure.
That's not something we're going to solve today. That's going to help this year's budget that we're trying to resolve, right? Like, that's, that's a, you know, where's they?
It's a master plan committee problem right now.
Right, so that's, that's, that's outside of our, that's above my pay grade. Okay, so that's not something that we're going to solve today for this budget. We need to solve this budget.
But how far away are we from solving it? Because I understand if we solve this year's budget, right? Next year, we know chapter 78 and state aid isn't going to improve, but we know our contractual obligations are going to go up. So next year, it's still going to be, hey, maybe we cut 10 this year, next year, it's going to be cut 10 again, 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 until we can get this revenue in town on both sides again.
But Patrick, I go back to, that is not something we're going to solve that's going to solve this budget. We have to fix this budget.
But it's a probably plan to run a business. You don't look at just this year. We need to know what next year and next year and next year look like so we can say.
I've seen that all the time. I've said that all the time. We've got short term and long term. Right now, that's a long-term goal that we need the Board of Selectmen to help advise on that. What we're tasked to do here today is to try and figure out how to balance the budget for this, and, and knock out the school, but knock out the rest of the town.
So, so what?
Because I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out is, we go back to, how are we going to solve this problem? If we go back to level funded, right, with level services, excuse me, level services, we can go back, I don't know how long, and we have not added on the town side. We haven't. You, like, I don't know where we can cut on the town side, especially when you've got increases that Mr. Kelly has talked about, okay, that the town has to absorb. Okay, including insurance, which is always like the news around everyone's neck.
And transportation. It's a news around our.
I totally understand. But how do we, how do we accomplish this, right? We need to figure out how to work together and, because the town doesn't have it. And I understand, we need master plan, we need a long-term solution. Nobody disagrees with that. But that doesn't solve the problem for next year.
We agree. We are here to solve next year's budget, right? And I also look to Mr. Hinckley and the Board of Selectmen to say, like, when are we going to have a real conversation about long-term planning? Because this problem has existed for several years.
Just, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Just a pair, on the comments you made earlier at past meetings about, all this information is publicly available. I have to work off of what the Master Plan Committee is proposing. That's massive zoning changes, because right now, you can't open a business right there. You have to apply for a special permit. So all future revenue to increase business in this town is limited to certain things, such as what's our business zoning? They're in the process of rezoning or putting together a plan for rezoning. If you break it down, even if you opened an industrial park in a Kushner tomorrow with $100 million's worth of property, it's only going to add $350,000 to the bottom line. That's going to temporarily solve something. And you see, well, it's $100 million's worth of property. We're collecting property taxes. We're not getting tax on their materials. We're not getting taxes on any of their revenue streams. Certain specific things can do that, and open up the conversation about marijuana growth. Yes, you can add special taxes to that. This is all stuff that involves high-level state legislature, including multiple town meeting votes. So to solve today's problem is probably going to take five years, six years. We've actively been working on it, and it's all on various videos that you can watch on a Kushner cable. Through the Master Planning Committee, you can watch all the vote of selectmen meetings and actually sit down and see what we're trying. We're constantly trying to cut expenses and increase revenue. Right now, we have excise tax and we have property tax. There's not much else we can deal with right now. We almost got eviscerated at town meeting last year for adding a restaurant tax, a meals tax, because we're just not trying to burn the taxpayers to the point where they have to move out. We have to do things progressively and we have to do it slowly, because we have an aging population here that honestly can't afford the taxes they pay now. So we can't just dump things on them. We have to do things strategically, and we have it. And it's all on video. We've had multiple discussions about it. We've had conversations in candid about it. There's only certain things we can do immediately, and it's definitely not going to get solved in one or two years. This massive zoning changes in order to bring business into this town that all has to get approved by the voters at town meeting. Because if the voters at town meeting show up and say, I don't want the Business Village District to go all the way down Middle Road and Main Street, and they say no, we're back to square one. So we can't rush it. We can't force it. We can only suggest it and provide the best information possible.
Chairperson, should I make one question? No question. In your planning for next fiscal year, are you going up to your full two and a half levy?
Mr. Kelly, I presume we always go to the whole two and a half levy, right? Are we close?
$120,000 is the cushion.
$120,000.
Is that the full, going up to the max of the two and a half?
No, that's, it's, we are short of the max $120,000. But if you remember last Fall Town Meeting, we used almost $50,000 of that to balance various things and take care of some past bills.
Okay.
That's the cushion to go into the fall.
So Chairperson Boucher.
Yes.
Sorry, are you finished?
No, my second question, new growth figure is, does that remain static for how many years? Yeah, the price of housing, the value of housing has increased.
It has gone, it has gone, well, new growth has gone down. It was 2022, it was approximately $450,000. FY '23. FY twenty-three, three hundred and twenty-five thousand. FY twenty-four, FY twenty-five, FY twenty-six. We estimate at two hundred thousand and we haven't hit that estimate in all the years. There is really no real new growth.
That speaks to the, probably the, the national economy for the last several years. That's, that's affected the growth.
Mr. Chairman, just so everyone here understands, we try to maximize local receipts. But local receipts are only ten percent of our revenue. Two thirds of our revenue comes from the tax levy. If you have no new growth, then you're restricted to two and a half percent. If you're giving collective bargaining raises above two percent, you're going beyond your limit. If state aid is twenty-five percent of your revenue, the state goes up a half a percent to one and a half percent a year in state aid. They're the ones who aren't keeping pace. You're not going to solve your revenue problem in the next five years to be able to affect these budgets and this revenue. Unless you have someone build a casino or multiple hotels or something like that. And I don't see that coming down the pike and I don't need a crystal ball to predict that. This is, last year we told you we were rolling quarters to try to balance the budget. This year we're rolling pennies.
Mr. Chairperson.
Yes. So, yeah, I don't want to speak for our committee, but, so we hear revenue's a problem and it's going to be for five more years. Expenses are a problem now. In one of the exhibits from our presentation, right, we're talking a seven hundred fifty-three thousand dollar increase. Out of this, our special education costs and salaries are a seven hundred and eighty-one thousand dollar increase in our budget. Everything else has been down. So, I, I, again, not speaking for everyone, but that's my fear, right? We know it's people at this point. It's a question of how many. And then now we have four more years, five more years to worry about that next year. These fixed costs and, and salaries and special education and transportation, we know are up. We can't control the market. We know they're getting more than three percent each year. I, I mean, we can control that to some extent through collective bargaining, but all these other contracted services. So, so we're going to fill a classroom with thirty kids next year and then we're going to have, we're going to have to make layoffs the year after and we're going to fill it with thirty-five kids. It's just going to get worse and worse and worse. We can't sustain it for five years.
How many students in each of the schools?
Approximately five hundred each.
Five hundred each?
Just to keep math simple.
Sorry, I'm going to be specific. How many in each school?
Four hundred and eighty-nine at that middle school and five hundred and two at the elementary. I, I have it somewhere, I just, I'll go to exactly.
This is where I'm going, right? Because a couple of years ago, we talked about the third nurse and Dr. Bailey, you said that it was a state requirement that if you have more than five hundred. Is it state requirement or recommendation?
It's a state requirement.
If you have more than five hundred kids.
Correct.
But it's not a, add an extra full-time employee if you have one more student over.
So, we have five hundred seventeen.
So, if you're.
I will point out with the nurse, we actually save money because when, so we have three nurses total for two schools. When another nurse is out, we used to go through, I think it was called culture care, but it, the, the cost for substitute nursing was ridiculous. Now, we float that other nurse over just for the day or whatever. We're able to do that a little bit better, but.
But how, if it's two nurses, how often are they called?
I, I, I don't know their attendance off the top of my head.
That this would be, that you'd need to bring in another person?
Well, the thing is, like, we have field trips. We have field trips that nurses have to go on. So, like, if a nurse goes on a field trip because a child has medical needs, another nurse needs to stay back at the school.
Isn't that when you get the, the temporary nurse? And I know one of the nurses that subs a lot there too, so like, that's when you get the sub.
We have had to get it, but it's less.
Dr. Bailey, I'm just trying to figure out a way, like, how we can reduce the costs? And I totally agree. The kids deserve the best that we can give them, okay? But what can we cut and still maintain adequate care for the kids? That to me is something that, is there something that we could do there? How much digging have we done to really see, are we better off with filling in that person? Because I know one time you talked about the fact that, well, they're the sub, like, they fill in when somebody calls out. How many times are these two people calling out where we need a third person to sub for them? I think there's another problem if we.
We have to have a second nurse, that's the bottom line.
A second? We're talking about third.
In one building.
In one building.
Two nurses in the elementary at all times.
Okay, and it is, I, can you just show me where the requirement is from the state?
We said it last year.
I don't remember that part, so I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Like, what I.
But I feel like we have a lot of the same conversations every year, right?
We have the same conversations because nothing seems to be changing.
Because it can. They're fixed costs and those are requirements, so we can't change that.
Okay, but there, there are things that we need to do. What are we going to cut? Like, I totally agree. We are at the point where we need to cut. What is going to be cut? We can't, we can't support a seven hundred thousand dollar increase. That's what this, isn't that what this conversation is about?
So, what, yeah, I was just going to say, what can be supported? I mean, it's no secret I tune into all the meetings, right? I know our counterparts increases, I know, you know, they had debt come off the books, they rolled into operating budget this year. Why them and not us type questions that I don't want to, you know, I don't want to get in the middle of that, but what, what is this bottom line figure? How much are we willing to, you know, go up in our conservative estimates? How much are we willing to, to use other resources? What's the, what's the bottom line for us to, to figure out? Because we, we understand, you know, as a committee and as administrators, the best operation is for the district, right? So, we don't want to sit here and discuss, hey, we, you, you, your committee recommends that we cut this person or that person. We know what we need, because we're there every day and we deal with the needs every day. So, if we get a number and come back into that number, that, that's a better option and point of discussion than, hey, I don't like that supply that you have. Hey, I don't like that contracted service. Hey, I don't like that person. Well, respectfully, you know, we're, we run the school district, right?
Yeah, I'll give you, hold on. I'll give you the example. So, we had Old Colony come in last week. So, their budget, not including their health insurance cost, because they carry their own health insurance in their budget, was up one point one nine percent, not including the health insurance. That, that takes them closer to four. But.
With that five hundred thousand dollars that was debt last year that they rolled into the operating budget, so that one point nine is not remotely close to accurate.
I'll agree with that.
Okay.
So, now their four is actually seven, eight, and it's still, and there are five hundred kids, we're a thousand. We're in town, you know?
Okay, so the other, the other thing I wanted to get into besides that was there, there seems to be some redundancy with instructional coaching in the, in the budget. So, you got the two, you got the two instructional coaches, right? So, one's at ninety-three K, the other one's ninety-one K. Put the benefits in there, that's two hundred thousand dollars to the town. But I also saw throughout the budget that there are stipends for teachers to offer to provide instructional coaching. So, that seems redundant to me.
That's it.
That's how, that's how it's worded throughout the budget. So, when I saw that, I was like, and we have, supposedly we have a seasoned teaching staff, correct?
Sixty-seven percent of our teachers are top step, top blood or something.
So, I just don't know why we need to spend two hundred thousand dollars on two individuals to coach teachers.
So, so part of that, right, is, hey, we can't afford curriculum in this town either, right? So, those costs have decreased significantly because we're obtaining new open source free curriculum. Well, guess what that means? The teaching model's changing and someone's going to teach that change to the teachers so that they can implement it seamlessly.
Even seasoned teachers?
Isn't that the curriculum director?
No. No. The curriculum director is one position and can't be in every classroom doing professional development. I mean.
Isn't that, isn't that one of those professional development days? Like, I guess, I mean, Dr. Bailey, you got to, so, I don't know how many people from the school committee were around, I think Mr. Todd, you may have been, when the superintendent, when the, sorry. When the vice principals were discussed, okay? The vice principals were added to the budget to be the curriculum coordinators. That's why they were, they were added in. Freetown Lakeville uses their assistant superintendent, they have a much larger school system, as the curriculum coordinator, okay? We have two vice principals and we have a curriculum coordinator. Every time we, we are said, hey, this is what the person's going to do. We need this person because of X. They get in the budget, then all of a sudden they can't do that job. You need more bodies, you need more bodies, you need more bodies. This is part of our struggle.
Yeah, and I think I was here for that.
I, I don't remember.
But what I can also say is, you know, my understanding is if you go back several years, is the curriculum in this town was a complete and utter disaster, right? So, we have to get to a solution, but we have to get to a place where we are still providing an appropriate level of education in this town. Because it's my opinion that if we think we have problems now, if we are not providing a quality education for our residents and their kids, they're going to think about, where should I raise my kids? And it's probably not going to be in a Kushner and we're going to have bigger problems. So, we want to get a solution, but we got to do it in a way that works for everybody. I think they made a point of, can we, can we get a number out that we think we can live with? And could we let the, the professional educators try to work through it to come up to see if we can meet it instead of nitpicking job by job?
All right. And I'm not nitpicking, just, I'm just using that as an example of, if I'm, if I'm in your shoes and I had to cut something, I wouldn't want to cut like a history teacher, an English teacher, a math teacher. It would be, it would be something like that that is paid a lot of money. That's where I would look, if I, if I had to make cuts.
They'll look, Mr. Boucher.
Right, and I'm not telling you where to do it. It's, it's your budget.
You would be hesitant about cutting teachers as well. We've had tons of conversations about these coaches. We understand them at first and how we have a better understanding of what, of what they do. And I think there's always, the natural inclination is to say, looks at a teacher that's touching the kids every day makes the most impact, probably true. But there is also indirect impacts that coaches can make, but, you know.
It's a matter of relooking at things. And, and I get the whole level services, but we're not at a point where we can provide like those level services. I think that's all we're asking for, is we need to go back and, and review it. And I think, Mr. Kelly, do you have some, a number?
Before I get to that, and I really don't, it would be pulling something out of the air. And, but, as a number of you know, in two months, I retire. And Patrick is going to another district. I want to say that I've enjoyed working with him. I think he and I work very well together and I think he's very skilled at what he does. He and I and other folks over the last couple of years, to use my trite expression, have pulled a number of rabbits out of our hats. The problem is, you're not in the position to look at the budget and go through this exercise, because we're really spinning wheels here. You've got to sit there and say, all right, it's not level service that we're worried about. You start at level funding and then if there's anything at all above level funding from the previous year, and I think there might be years coming up, especially with the state, that there will be less than level funding. And so, I don't have a crystal ball, but knowing the state wants to not give two hundred plus towns adequate funding in both chapter seventy, chapter ninety, and unrestricted local aid. You've got to start at level funding and see if there's anything you can add to it above and beyond. Once you get beyond your fixed cost, you're always going to have an increase in insurance. You're always going to have an increase in pension costs. You're always going to have Medicare on the, as an arithmetic function of your total salaries. That's the problem. You're all, you're trying to keep level service and you've got to start at level funding and see if you can add anything to it.
Well, part, part of the problem is it has to be run almost more like a private sector business where, and you can attest to this, Sue, depending on how your business does that year, you might not get raises. It might be flatlined. But we have to adhere to union mandated contractual increases of, what, three, four percent? And administrative levels, so I'm going to just use this as an example. So, from FY twenty-two through FY twenty-six, technology director, average increase per year, eight point three percent. AES assistant principal, average increase, four point three percent. Curriculum director, four point six, seven percent. Business manager, five point eight, six percent. Superintendent, six point three, six percent. Average increase in salary per year. So, those are, those are your top paying positions too. So, when we look at that, we look at, again, union mandated increases, the union's got to get more in line and realistic sometimes. Because taxpayers can't afford it like they used to. We have a, an irresponsible state government that is, this is why we're all in this position where we are right now, because of wasteful spending by a governor and whoever's beneath her. On, I mean, I could go down this road all night, but I'm not going to. And it's affecting our local aid and I've said it time and time again. And this is, and then it puts us in this position where we're fighting for every last dollar. And this is, and this is where we're at, but it's, it's not sustainable. Everybody, everybody knows that.
I just want to make one comment because, and I totally appreciate what, what you're saying. The fact though is that this isn't a private enterprise, right? So, when you say, hey, we should operate it, like, it isn't.
It, it isn't, but you have to kind of take that into consideration though.
Listen, I, I, what I do for a living is design compensation structures, what, what we pay people, okay? So, I get it. And I will say, the committee has always taken a principled approach when we make decisions around compensation, right? What's the budget? What's the market? So, when you say, hey, this one got a four percent and eight percent or whatever, what the story doesn't tell is what's the market paying for those positions? And are we making those increases to be competitive? Because what we can't have and don't want is a revolving door, especially at the leadership level. Because what happens when you have a revolving door in the leadership position? Do you think that not having continuity and consistency impacts education? It does. It's a competitive labor market. So, we can't just say, hey, we won't pay, because we won't keep people. It doesn't mean we have to pay the highest and it doesn't mean we have to do that in every position. But we have to make decisions to try to make sure that we've got continuity and that we're being competitive.
But that's the same exact problem that the town is facing.
We can't do that to the police chief or the fire chief.
Yeah. We're, we're, I mean, he.
Why don't we have a town accountant? Because of compensation.
Because of compensation.
And, yes, but I will say one thing.
So, we're going to lose all our administrators because of compensation?
Doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. There's only one thing that matters. And this, yes, it's not private industry. There's one thing that matters and that's the taxpayer's ability to pay. And this, yes, it's not private industry. There's one thing that matters, and that's the taxpayer's ability to pay. And if they don't have the ability to pay, then you've got to ratchet down where you're going, and you might have to provide lesser service, but that's where it is.
With all due respect, Mr. Kelly, we asked you for a number. You still haven't given us one.
I, I'd say a hundred to 125,000 increase. And I'm looking, because of the money that OC is gonna charge us in an assessment, which I think is unreasonable, and the fact that the town is looking at a $200,000 increase on its side, where you're factoring in 150,000 as, from fixed costs like insurance, pension, et cetera. So, the town's increase is 50,000. I think that's generous.
Mr. Kelly, how many people, how many positions are we not filling on the town side?
MTE?
Yeah.
Right now, five, but a number of them are part-time, or we're cutting full-time to part-time.
Have our residents been educated on those vacancies and cuts?
No.
Because what I'm getting to, right, is we can talk about level funding, but we're all working for the residents, to your point, right? What if they value the services that the school provides? Should they not have the vote to say, you know, we support that budget? When, the, the uncomfortable topic is, when does this town let the residents speak? And we look at a proposition two and a half, override? I mean, if they want, I, just bear with me for a second, I'm, I'm not saying it's the answer. But if they want those two policemen that, you know, are, are gonna be cut, if they want that fire station open, and they're willing to pay their taxes for that, if they want our schools to be level services, and they're willing to pay those taxes for that, when are we gonna present that opportunity to our residents?
They just voted down by a 75% margin.
I'm talking about service, public services.
Okay, I get it, but just to use this as an example. They just voted by a 75% margin at the ballot box, and you saw it. And that is only adding $70 per year to their property taxes.
And a lot of that, what I heard was, you know, lack of communication, lack of education on the project, you know, not, not necessarily a belief in the way it was procured.
You know what? It wasn't all that. It's, it basically comes down to what people can afford, and people are...
But did they tell you that? Did the voters tell you that?
They told you at the ballot box.
But if we took a year to explain to them all the services, they're gonna lose out on if we don't do something now. Are they gonna say, actually, we can afford a little bit more? Or, or are they gonna say, you know what? No, I don't want those services anyway, so we find a vote no. When do we leave it up to them? Again, we're on a five-year plan here, a five-year plan of no growth and cutting expenses. When do we, when do we look at that? Because the state A to Z isn't changing. So, the only opportunity is in, in override, or we're not gonna bring any new revenue in between now and the next five years, and we're gonna continue to cut on the town side and the school side.
88% of our tax revenue is, is solely from residential. We have very limited industrial and commercial. That's not gonna change immediately, as our chair, uh, for, select, select board chair said, Mr. Hinckley. But, but they're working on it, uh, but it's not gonna happen overnight. So, what we can control is what we spent, and...
But we're decimating services left and right, town and school. That's what we're being asked to do.
But the bottom line is what the taxpayer can afford.
But, but, so I'm in a situation on the town I live in, I'm not gonna, you know, I'm not gonna draw necessarily parallel comparisons, but how's it gonna go up left and right? Because there's a significant deficit in town, taxes are about to go up thousands of dollars a year. People are moving out because they don't wanna support it, or they're going to the ballot and voting no, because there is an override on the table. It's been communicated for eight-plus months, they've summarized every step of the way, but they're presenting the opportunity to the residents. And if it gets through, guess what? Yeah, people are gonna leave, but people are gonna move in that value those services and those, the product that's being provided. We can't just say, we can't just put blinders on for five years. We can't do it. You're not gonna have a fire department to boost it up.
Alongside that, suppose we do go with an override. That now becomes, correct me if I'm wrong, but does not become our basis for the following year? Where do we go for that? How many people in this town, how many residents in this town do not have children in the school system?
That's a good question.
There's a lot. If you have any sense, or you follow, I'm not...
More in town.
Social media, but there is a big concern about overtaxes in this town, and people are complaining that they are overtaxed.
And hold on, are you referring to an override on the operational budget or on, on a debt exclusion?
Well, operational budget.
Oh, yeah, that's, but, but, there's no way.
Listen, we're all here saying...
Once you go down that road, we're gonna be forced to do it every single year, or expected to do it.
It's gonna become our basis for the following year.
I understand, I understand how it works, but we're looking at five years of no growth or just...
And you know what? This is why, the first time, uh, we've never done this on the finance committee before. I called our two elected state reps that represent the town of Cushing before us for a hearing, so they could hear our level of frustration. And we gave it to them, if anybody watched that meeting. And they didn't like it, but that's too bad, 'cause they had to hear it, because that's the reality. Because what they're doing up in Boston at the state level is destroying our local communities here with wasteful spending on all this green crap, 'cause that's what it is. Five, 10 years from now, you're gonna find out, oh, yeah, we, it, it didn't do what it was supposed to do. I'm, I'm just tired of this crap.
We can't control that. And, and there's frustration on the finance committee.
You can control it by not voting for these people.
But there's, there's frustration on the finance committee's side about all the cuts they're making on the town side, correct? You guys are frustrated and the services losing on the town side.
But we're not seeing any cuts on the school side.
That, that's not the point yet. I understand that, but you're, you're frustrated with the cuts on the town side. Well, guess what we're gonna be looking at next year? Cuts on the town side. The year after, I can say this for five years in a row. The state isn't fixing the aid right now. Nothing's gonna be fixed. When is the finance committee gonna say, enough's enough, we're not gonna cut, we're not gonna close that department, we're not gonna close this department? And, and I'm, I'm saying finance committee, 'cause you're here in front of us. Obviously, it's a bigger discussion. So, something's gotta give, I guess. And, and we're not saying we're not willing to cut, we're gonna try, right? We try every year, we, we find a way.
I, I did, forgive me, but it isn't try, we have to, right? Like, there's not, not...
Okay, so we have to, we're gonna have to next year in the year up?
I, I don't disagree, I don't disagree, but until, but, but until, but to your point, right? Like, I think the residents, when they feel it, they haven't felt it yet.
But that's too late.
I, I don't disagree, but...
So, when do we collaborate and say, what, say we get this budget through, and, and we're all happy with the outcome? When do we sit in alone, school committee, finance committee, board of select, and say, what are we doing in 12 months when we're sitting in this room in May again to fix that situation?
And that's what I think Mr. Boucher's saying.
That's what I was asking earlier.
Yeah, but I think that's...
But his answer was five years.
But...
Would you have any other options, like figure about it? The entire center of this town is entirely open space protected land. We have two corridors. We don't own South Bean Street. State's trying to shove that down our throat too, which is gonna increase operational costs on the town side. We've been fighting it because...
So, you're gonna have to cut people.
Exactly. So, fix this problem, find another problem.
So, when is someone gonna say, you know, we need more than X amount of policemen or X amount of firemen? The, the town, the residents are gonna get frustrated with that, and they're gonna say, I'm willing to pay the taxes so that we can keep... So, when are we gonna collaborate to build that plan to say, if we don't do now, all these positions, not only in '26 that we just cut on town and school side, but in '27 aren't gonna be there either, and guess what? In '28, it's gonna be even less. Let's give them that five-year picture now. And then, let, let them say, are you guys gonna be okay with this? And you'll see the people that aren't okay with it go, you'll see the people okay with it stay, or we'll present some sort of override or other opportunity, and they'll vote, and, and people will go and stay depending on that vote.
But I think at that point, Patrick, I think at that point, we needed to have done whatever we can to cut, right? That's the only way, because that's the only way I'm even gonna vote for something like this. We need to have at least taken whatever steps, because I, I've said this before, but we can, I can sit here and not, I'll pay the increase, okay? But my neighbor down the street can't.
When this vendor's getting $100,000 for an out-of-district special, special education placement, we can cut, 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 cut. That cost is only gonna go up.
Any out-of-district students?
We have, we have out-of-district students, yeah. And we have three right now that aren't even built into this budget that are being discussed at the high school level, might need out-of-district.
For out-of-district?
Absolutely.
Mr. Kelly?
There's a third option, regardless.
By all means.
Cuts and have people accept the cuts. He said, move out, or...
Or, yeah.
Or to that, but the third one is to have people say, I'm gonna live in this town, and I'm, if we have to cut, then I'm going to cut.
Mr. Kim. Just for some clarification, to jump back onto your conversation about contractual increases, I just need some clarification. Anybody in admin at the school is not in a union, correct? Just to clarify, just the teachers are in a union? So, just to put note on that, to piggyback on what you said, Mr. Kim. And at that point, you have to go back to the idea of, instead of a 4%, 1% or flatline, like, and it sucks, I know, I'll be the first one to say it, but if it's not a COLA specifically forced by a union negotiation, we have to look at that too. We have to.
That's, that's why I stated, the only thing we can control is what we spend. Uh, and that's, that's, that's one area where it could be controlled.
At my job, we took pay cuts. Everybody, from partners all the way down to associates, we took pay cuts. Okay? And it was earmarked, and it was like, okay, if everything goes okay, you'll get that money back. And thankfully, everybody got that money back, but that's what we did, because it was either pay cuts or it was a reduction in, in headcount. And we voted, pay cuts, but that's the thing.
By the way, when the committee looks at where someone is positioned from a pay perspective, we don't just say automatic increase. Part of what we look at is, what is the market, where are we at, and there could be no increase dependent.
With all due respect, with this, with the money.
Could I finish my thought?
What was that?
Could I finish the thought before you jump in? My point is, there's no guarantee that somebody gets a pay increase. The answer might be they don't get one. It's all part of the analysis. That's my point.
And I know there's a market out there. We have to look, we have to, you know, look at that somewhat, but the town of Cushing, we can only afford to pay what we can pay. Regardless of what, for Haven's paying somebody Madapoiset, um, we can pay what we can pay, and we have to take that into consideration. We have to think about taxpayers.
Of course. But there, there's also a point where, by the way, we are competing with Madapoiset and for Haven and other places for talent, right? So, so they can leave and go there, and if we have a revol...
Doesn't sound like our teachers are leaving though, because you say...
I'm not, I'm not talking specifically about teachers, I'm talking about any position, could be, could be any position. But the point is, is like, at some point, if there's a revolving door, don't you think at some point it actually costs you more?
Um, I have a question.
Doesn't, doesn't change the dollars.
I understand.
Where, where, on layoffs and cutbacks, we're a self-insure on a workman's comp.
You're gonna have to...
Not workman's comp, but unsure, on a...
You're gonna have to lay off three to get the benefit of the layoff for two.
Okay, I, I remember that formula, but I wanna, you know, make people aware of that. You know, it's a three-to-two type, type of thing. Have you a line item, or you have to have a create one, if you still...
No, I've got unemployment, uh, it's, safety is approximately 30,000. We've gone average 15,000 a year expenditure, but we can spike year to year, as you know.
'Cause I don't see...
And there's 15,000 of the seasonals.
How, how many unfilled positions are currently at the schools? Because that's what we started with. And the only ones that are no fills are obviously accounting, right? We need, we need people in finance, right? But I think everything else is kind of a possibility.
Strategy last year, that it's not that we didn't have cuts, we, we didn't fill positions, and then we didn't carry those positions forward. Uh, but yes, we have vacancies in positions, but they're teaching.
This is just a thought, and I could be way off, but I teach in East End, we just laid off 50 teachers, 50. It's a huge impact to our community, but I'm, what we did offer is incentive package, packages for those teachers that were almost close to retirement, that could get out a couple of years earlier. You know, here's $20,000 if you would retire. We wa, we were able to save 24 jobs, because we had those teachers that were willing to go.
And we've offered solutions like that, and they don't wanna be entertained.
That would be in a contract, no?
No, it's not. It wasn't not in our contracts.
But we've made similar suggestions, and, and they're getting vetoed before we can even have a conversation with them, about them. And that's, I guess, that's the, again, the frustration.
I'm sorry, you're having conversations with who, with these combos, where they're vetoing?
The town administration and the select board. We've offered different strategies that, you know, we're working on right now.
You offered the opt-out from...
Insurance.
The, uh, health insurance, that would not be a solution this year, 'cause it has to be offered across the board.
Well, Mr. Kelly's saying is, if we offer an opt-out to the schools, which I've had conversations with both of you on it, and I, I'm open to any, any option, but if we offer it to school employees, we have to offer it to every other union, which means I have to go to collective bargaining with every other union in town and offer it to them as well.
But if we can offer it now and negotiate it now and get that expense off the book, at least on the school department...
We can't offer it unless the whole town...
That's a law?
It's not a law, it's just in the contract negotiations, anything that we offer the school... If it's in particular, we have to offer any health insurance, period. We have to offer the same exact package to every single union.
What's our fear in offering it?
It's, there's no fear. We just have to come together with the project. It wasn't, like, you mentioned this months ago, we started talking about it again. I sat down with Mr. Kelly the other day, he's brought it up to council. So, just because, you know, you don't hear an immediate answer, doesn't mean we're not working on it.
No, that's not what I'm saying.
You said they veto it, and like, I take it in front of that, because the only thing you've offered this year, that I've noticed, was through the emails back and forth about the health insurance thing. Just because there's not an initial response, doesn't mean we're not vetoing it. We're not, sorry.
But it is, but by the time we get that all done, it's two to three years down the road.
Even for something that, but it sounds like...
But that type of thing, a school could do that, you end up losing the high-paid teachers if they accept...
Which is important, yeah, we want like general longevity, but they're also the highest paid in the trade.
Yeah, and then you would hire lower paid.
You save jobs too, because people are wanting to leave.
But there's a balance, right? You've got 67% that are in that threshold, like...
People want, like, if you're two years out, right.
Where's that breaking point, right? Like, at what point do you start losing kind of effectiveness? But a 67, 67 seems like a high percentage.
Before you get to that, before you get to that, you have to remember, if it's teachers who have maxed out, that's one thing. If it's teachers who haven't maxed out, it's where that sweet spot is between retirement money and what you're offering them in an incentive to leave.
Right, there are, there are strict criteria about that. You had to be at least 20 years in, so you would be at top step in our, in my district.
But you wouldn't have maxed out in retirement.
No, you, well, depending on age and years of service.
20 years, you're nowhere close.
Right, well, yeah.
So, then it's a question of, as a teacher, do I accept a reduced retirement for an incentive to leave?
We had 24 teachers take it, and we only laid off two people in my building, instead of 11.
And so, that would mean that they'd either have to get a job in another district...
Or they don't have to work, and their husbands make a lot.
It's up to them.
It's up to them, honestly, they take it, and it doesn't matter, it's not a problem.
But you have to, you have to figure that sweet spot.
Right, and there is, and you just dive in online, I've already looked at mine.
I think everyone's old enough, any possibility that I could see.
Yeah.
That's what I'm thinking, that's what he did, I'm just saying it works for us.
Thousands of people are taking early retirement, as we speak.
I would love to.
Our, our problem there, half of those who are leaving the federal government are taking early retirements.
50 positions, 20, yeah.
But Mr. Kelly, if you went down that road, it would affect our budget for this year, correct? We don't have time to do that.
It could on the school side.
You'd be able to present that and get buy-in?
So, that type of incentive, you'd be able to do?
I have four days.
The retirement? Retirement, we could do tomorrow if we come up with a...
Not retirement.
Opt-out?
That's, no, that's an incentive to leave.
But the thing is, in, in my town, they give us four days to make a decision, which is unfair. So, I think if you do that, it needs to be like a longer deadline. You can't give...
When do we know that the budget has to do with print? Ultimately, that's our timing.
Beginning of May, and here we are, and...
Yeah, the beginning of May with the June 2nd...
But that's why we threw it together in my town. We threw it together, and people jumped on it.
With the June 2nd town meeting. And you have to have, um, you have to have a, uh, because that includes council review. And you have to have, uh, if, you have to have town meeting before June 30th.
I guess the fear again is, and I'm not suggesting any answer is the right answer, it's that there's five years of potentially no growth. Uh, just, I have a question.
In our defense, Patrick, since 20, 22, when I started here, this has been what we've been saying every year. This has been what we've been saying every year, when you come up with the budget. It's not sustainable. We can't do this next year. We can't do this next year, and then the next year comes, and we have a bigger goal than we did the year before. So, my frustration tonight is, that hasn't stopped it.
You know what I'm saying? But we've got to have, instead of just-
Thank you.
Oh.
I drank too much water.
We can't, we can't all talk over each other.
Thank you, it's annoying.
We were looking for a solution. I'm saying basically, if, if, we, you know, if we're looking to, for a plan for a reduction to meet certain goals, okay? It's late in the day. We may want to, we can, if he disagrees, use free cash, which we've done for years, okay? But we should have a plan by which we make certain goals, so we're not reaching that, avoiding the collision course.
Mr. Kelly, what's the problem with using free cash to balance the budget?
You gotta pay it back over three years in a platoon to put D O R.
If it's used for operational expenses, correct?
So, so any amount or a certain threshold?
Any amount.
So that's not, Mr. Hall, probably, I don't think that's helpful, considering we've got a five-year D O R problems.
To pay it back, no, I don't agree with that. I gotta see that, that ruling in writing from D O R.
They're, they're-
Not that we-
I, I think at the end of the day, Patrick, do you have the number? You have the number.
One hundred to one hundred twenty-five.
So I want to make sure that is the number, because this is going to impact cuts in people at this point. So, one hundred to one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars means significant cuts on the school side personnel.
If I turn around tomorrow, like, I told you and Patrick,
Yep.
and all of a sudden, there's a fifty thousand dollar windfall into local receipts from some source, then it's a different story. But as of today, uh, with the conservative estimates of local receipts, and Patrick and I have had discussions on that, I mean, I'm at eighty percent, and I think I'm pushing it. I'd rather be at seventy-five percent. But if, uh, something happens, or the Senate comes out with generous figures beforehand, before town meeting, it's a, that's the problem with doing revenue estimates before the legislature actually acts. And that's why it's crazy, but you've got a state in one fiscal year, a federal government on another fiscal year, and no one gets together, and then the state goes to one-twelfth budgeting, and that's even worse.
Patrick, is it possible to come up with, if we can get to, you know, two hundred, here's the budget, if we can get to one fifty, right? I'm not saying, Dr. Bailey, we, we execute on something today, right? You're not sending whatever color those slips are to the teachers, right? Like, but if we have a plan to figure out, you know, we can do one seventy-five or two hundred, here it is.
Yes, we definitely do that.
I just, aloud, I did rough math, if we're looking at a hundred to one hundred twenty-five, that's fifteen F T Es. That's more than ten percent of our workforce.
It's not realistic.
And if you're looking at two hundred, it's, it's not gonna be-
It may not be fifteen teachers, right?
We're gonna have to figure that out.
It's fifty, if it's fifteen forty.
F T Es.
Might I offer, um, a suggestion? I was going through, and I know we're not, shouldn't be nitpicking, but in my experience, I'm being an IT manager, I was noticing that, um, there's a lot of purchases made through C D W, which is, um, a tech reseller. So you got Tech Data, you got Connection, you got C D W. C D W is the most expensive one out there, by far. I've done several quotes on various equipment over the years, and every single time, they always come in the highest. Something to look at, just to cut a little bit of cost there.
Yeah, and I don't have, I don't have exact answers on that. We definitely quote out everything. Uh, the benefit that we get, that I know from C D W, is they're on O S D state contract. So for state municipalities, towns, we get a significant discounted rate over there.
There's also Connection, and there's other providers.
Yeah, and we always, again, when we have to, we have to procure it at a certain threshold and get multiple quotes, and we have to go with the lowest quote, so. Again, I don't have the exact, I, I hear your point, though.
That's one.
Patrick, I have a question.
Uh, just, so everyone understands, on Friday, the board of selectmen is going to be discussing this budget for the first time together. I've briefed various selectmen individually, but I've been, they are going to give me direction on where I should go for this, whether it's on revenue, whether it's on the cuts, whether they want more cuts from the town side. So, that's why this is a, uh, shifting-
Fluid.
Fluid.
And what's the deadline for print?
Uh, we'll push it as far-
We're talking fluid numbers, beginning of May isn't gonna, we need a finite date.
Uh, I'd say the seventh, but that doesn't mean that I won't sit there in a memoryograph machine to, or a Xerox machine, or any, 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 a print, uh, uh, a print, a printing machine from Toys R Us to get it out if I have to. I mean, we're all sitting here behind the eight ball, and the eight ball is saying, I'm sorry, the future is unclear. But, uh, you're looking at the first week in May, we have to get it to the printer and have council approve, approve it. If we use a professional printer.
So that's like a week away, right?
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
Pat, Patrick, I suppose.
We've got a meeting Monday.
Yeah.
On, it was librarian, media senate directors. It looked like that had increased by a hundred and seven thousand. Um, and it looked like there was a position that was added back, is that correct? Um, no, no position was added back. We have one librarian at each school. Um, there was turnover, I believe, last year in those positions that they rehired and hired.
It looked like, it looked like the base salary of one of the librarians increased by thirty-two thousand.
Yeah, I, again, I think it's just they came in with a master's, whatever, and, you know, we absorbed it in the budget with other cuts, that, that salary might increase, but we obviously have-
That's the market value.
Well, no, it's, it's by the collective bargaining agreement, if they come in with a master's in X amount of experience, they fall into that grid where we have to pay them that much. That's what it was.
So does the school, does the school have to cap librarians?
No, we don't have to.
It's not mandated by the state? So what's the, what's the total, um, number on that, for the two, for the two librarians?
Give me two seconds.
The librarian, one sixty for fiscal year twenty-six.
Okay, yeah.
One sixty is a good deal.
So why was, why was one of the positions zero in fiscal year twenty-five, Patrick? So what I'm looking at shows zero for the second. For the second librarian?
Yep, zero for fiscal year twenty-five.
Yeah, I, I honestly, I think that's an error. We had two librarians last year. So that's, might just be a clarifying error. I'll get you clarification on that. I don't believe we added a librarian.
No.
So going back, and I'm not telling you how to, how to cut your budget, but going back, and so if you want to spare teachers, just go, this is how, I'm, I'm sitting in your shoes right now, and I'm facing budget cuts, but I want to preserve every single teacher I can. I'm still, I'm still looking at those two coaching positions that cost two hundred K. Now you got the two librarian positions, just on a salary is one sixty, then you had benefits, so that's close to four hundred K right there. So now you're down to cutting, what, three fifty? Or less than that.
Benefits, benefits are on the town side.
Okay. But you, but you're gonna not, you could potentially not have to lay off teachers.
But, may I?
Yes.
Before you do, we did have two librarians last year totaling, um, one hundred and twelve thousand dollars.
So it must be somewhere else.
Yeah, it just, yeah, I gotta, I gotta check that, and I apologize for it.
I, I don't want to get into the argument about who we're going to cut, but just realize that we have the, the total view, the balcony view of all of these positions. And I'll just give you an example with coaches. If we didn't have coaches, we would have to pay money for professional development, which is very costly, that they do sometimes. Um, that's just one example.
Why, why would you have to pay, pay for that?
Who would provide professional development, or plan it and all of it?
Who's, so, who, who needs professional development?
Our teachers.
It's in our contract.
Our staff, it's in the con, it's part of the contract. Uh, we, we, our, our, um, education system is constantly changing, constantly, and we have to keep up with it. If we can't stay the same.
Only for like, like, like young, like newer teachers?
No, no. And Patrick, um, mentioned this earlier today about the open source free curriculum. The coaches are a huge part of that, and they're working with the seasoned teachers, with the new teachers. It's not, coaches are not just used for new teachers, they're used for everyone. And I can tell you that in other districts that have the coaches, there's two coaches in a building, there's more. We have one coach in each building right now. Um, and again, these cuts, we'll figure it out. It is going to impact the quality of education in the town of Kuschna. But we will figure it out. If you tell me that one hundred to one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars is the number, I, I want- Tonight. Well, see, that's the problem, like, that's why we have a seven hundred fifty thousand dollar increase, because I'm not comfortable cutting people at this point until I have a real figure, because these are people's livelihood, people's jobs.
We're not, we're not delivering that message, right? So you, all we're asking is come up with a plan. We're not saying, hey, deliver the pink slips. We're not at that point, Dr. Bailey, right? Like, we could have been discussing a different plan. But that's, that's what we're asking.
Yeah, we, we can do that.
But we're talking about like, running out of time? We could have been doing that already.
We could have done it.
Okay, so if you've already got the numbers, then why don't we talk about that, though?
No, we have different scenarios of cuts.
It's, it's also, it's a collective, it's a collective bargaining issue if they're union positions, because you have to give the unions opportunity to bargain the impact of the, uh, cuts. So, between coming up with the plan and then having the administration do what they have to do under the chapter one fifty E, uh, takes a little bit of time. And I don't think it's appropriate to, for, to specifically put positions right now when they might have to give union notice for impact bargaining. But, uh, I think they have, as of now, and it could change Friday. I think Friday, after Friday, the selectmen might have narrowed it down to exactly what they want. And at that point, uh, you'll have your target.
Thank you. And I would like to just say that I do agree with that, because as a courtesy to the staff, Dr. Chan's staff, I would never talk about specific positions in this forum without notifying the staff first. I don't think that's fair then.
No, and I wouldn't ask that.
But in a small district, everybody is gonna know who, like, a seventh grade science teacher is, or who's the least senior second grade teacher, or whatever it is, right?
And I would never ask for that. It's like, hey, at this level, we have to cut X number, X-
Everybody knows about that.
Those, those positions that Paula has been working through have not been reviewed with the full school committee, right? So the budget subcommittee took a run at it, I think.
Yes, correct.
But that's not been presented to us.
Okay.
Cause there's sensitivity, and these people's livelihoods, until we knew a number, they've worked some errors, we haven't seen it.
Doctor.
That's correct.
And, and to reiterate, I'm not telling you how to, how to make the cuts. I'm just, I'm just thinking outside the box. If, if you want to preserve teachers, that's all. You know, my level of frustration, and I'll, and I've said this many times, is at the state level. And shame on them for putting us in this position right here, where we're arguing with each other over education. It's, it's horrible. It's really horrific. I wish, actually, I wish our two new state reps were here tonight to hear this meeting, because this is the one they should have been at. Um, I'm, I'm planning on calling them before us again next year. But I think I might have them come to one of these meetings, because these are the ones that really hurt people. And it just stinks when you hear that they, they voted to approve a bill for three hundred fifty million dollars, again, for migrant shelters. It's like, hello, what about our own citizens here? I mean, it's just, it's so frustrating. You have no idea. And that money is only good until June. So guess what? They're gonna have to approve another bill that the governor's gonna probably put before them, and they're gonna have to vote on that again. And again, that's gonna hurt, that hurts all the communities. At some point, the communities have to stand up and make a stand against this kind of crap. And, cause it's easy for, it's easy for the governor to say, ah, just put it on the backs of the middle, middle-class taxpayers. Make them go for an override. Oh, they started doing it, so apparently they can do it. That's what they're hoping for. If we don't fight and make a stand, nothing's gonna change. And I feel, I feel for you folks. I, I, I hate seeing people have to cut jobs. I really do. From any, from any department in our town. It's, it really sucks.
But to add on to what you're saying, to follow some of the bills that have been filed through the state legislature. One of them is basically dealing with curriculum. And they want to enhance curriculum by legislation, rather than Department of Education. And it doesn't make sense that, you know, we have a more athletics-based, uh, type of curriculum, and, and, you know, cause many, but that is very similar, in my estimation, uh, what we have now. But they're gonna probably mandate it to those communities which don't use this type of curriculum that we have. That term, it doesn't necessarily mean that legislation will cause us to have to hire staff. But if we lose staff in that area, it will be against the legislation. Those communities that don't have it are basically gonna be tweaking and getting more, you know, type of curriculum developers in the, in this, in this system.
So my frustration is-
But see, I'm, I'm adding on to what you're saying. And we're dealing with not only court mandates of, you know, on, uh, formulas of education, but also we're dealing with many of the, uh, the legislation that keeps coming down that we have, we have to, you know, maintain. Nurses, for example, in schools. And, you know, we're, we're dealing with all, you know, so it's not like it was twenty years ago.
Well, there's a ton of irresponsible spending going on. But I just want to add, the thing that frustrates me the most with government mandates is, yeah, they're gonna mandate this stuff, but they're not gonna give us the extra local aid to support it. They're gonna put it on the taxpayers. That's what drives me nuts. Well, it's, and, and Pete, correct me if I'm wrong, you brought this up at a previous meeting with the Mass Save budget, right? Can you, can you go through those numbers again? What, what the governor was asking for?
Mass Save last year, the budget was budgeted for three billion dollars.
Yeah.
They spent just over seven hundred and fifty million dollars, leaving more than two billion left unspent. This year, the governor's budget included five billion dollars for Mass Save, on top of the two billion that they hadn't spent already. And then when she was pushed on it over the electricity rates, said she was gonna cut half a billion dollars off of Mass Save, pushing it like some wind. But at the same time, it was still a, a one-point-five million dollar increase on last year's budget, where two-thirds of that budget weren't even used to begin with. So.
Well, that, and that speaks to the bigger problem. It's, it's, it's the leadership at the top of the state level. Just spending- Just spending money irresponsibly. Just think of that, think if we had that, those two extra billion dollars in the state budget to spread out for local aid, whether it's chapter 70, chapter 90, divide it up, we would have extra money and we wouldn't be sitting here right now. The state's a mess.
There's over...
It's a mess.
There's over 200 towns or districts, 215.
280, I think it's 280.
I thought there was 300.
That are minimum, that are minimum aid.
Yeah, half a percent, right?
So in summary, just to kind of steer things back, 100 to 125,000 increase now, which is about...
And you and I will talk tomorrow.
0.75% over last year. And then again, just because, you know, it's not fair to just plan for now. For the next five years, is there the expectation that we project level funded? Since we know, again, just based on discussion, we know town revenues aren't gonna change, and they're estimated at X, and we can assume minimum aid for chapter 70 for the next two, three years until Student Opportunity Act expires, they reform the formula.
I'd say you start at level funding and you work up with what you see from the estimates.
Just keep, I would suggest keep it in mind, because all the increases are generally under contracts. So when you're coming up on contracts, try to keep it within COLAR or thereabouts. And I think that'll save tremendously in the long run. Because that's what the town's gotta do. You know, we're not at 5, 6% increases for people on the town side. So I think contractually, if you keep it within pair of the town, I would think that we'll be able to hopefully work with that.
No, again, that's fair, and I don't want to go back in. But again, we can't control that with special education costs or transportation. So that's one piece of the puzzle, if you will. It's the other pieces that I'm more concerned about that. We have one bus company that bids on our contract every year. Until we spend money to buy 11 buses in the town and then hire 11 bus drivers, we're never gonna save on the yellow buses, it's gonna go up whatever they name every year.
Is it even feasible to consider like the coaching decisions to regionalize? You know, share, because that's what the town's doing for our community plan. We're regionalizing the plan to like share with other towns, is that something that's...
There's laws that only allow certain regionalization if we become a regional school district. There's others that, you know, there's potential to regionalize bus services without regionalizing as a district. I'm not an expert on that, I don't want to speak anymore to it.
We have a project underway that is looking at regionalization of various aspects.
I think that would help tremendously. I mean, that's, like I said, we're doing that on the town side with the town plan and this position. Unfortunately, I think that's what we're up against right now.
I would say that for the town, and this is just my professionalism raising its ugly head. Regionalization can be the solution, but you also lose control.
Sure.
Regional districts can assess you, and you have, as you see with old column, and you have no control over it.
So Patrick, I think to answer your question, yes, in terms of level funding. But at the same time, we do have an early barometer when we know what the receipts are gonna be, what the expected state aid is gonna be. So we knew our rough number months ago. So I would come up with level funding, but then once we know what we have to work with, then we have our wiggle room for it.
Yeah, if we have four in the black, we can work with that.
Because truthfully, everybody here wants what's best for the kids. But we also have to look at what's best for the town.
I think we agree on that. It's just town and school, it's the residents, the town.
I'll say, like, I know we disagree on many things probably, but I think this was a healthy conversation. I think it's important to have these conversations, to be transparent and agree to disagree, but to keep working towards a solution that works.
Hopefully, we can do it a little earlier next year and get it in the bud before we get on the gas wall.
Apologize for starting off a little heated, but this is tough, this is a very difficult situation. And, you know, and like I said, it sucks that we're all put in this position. But we've been put in this position by failed leadership at the state level. And something's gotta give with all the irresponsible spending. And, you know, another thing that the legislature never wants to tackle is pension reform. We've talked about this before. You know, the way the current state pension system is, I mean, I believe it was originally set up for first responders, if I'm not mistaken, police, fire. And then everybody else started jumping on board. And it's, it's basically, right now, it's an unfunded, it's an underfunded liability at the state level. They're hoping that it'll be fully funded, I think, by 2040. But if they keep...
It's a mandate that the local community retirements, there's 106 or 107 retirement boards in the state, in the Commonwealth. They've mandated that all the local ones or the county ones or whatever are fully funded, fully vested and funded by 2040. I don't know if the state is included in that. It's kind of like the legislature, they exempt themselves from everything.
I have my doubts, a lot of them hit the market. Because of spending on other, the money that's being allocated towards other things.
I was town budget paid, any teachers retirement.
No, that's, that's a teacher's retirement.
That's separate, they're separate from the town.
Yeah, if you did that, you would, this budget would be untetherable.
They did that years ago, not because of that reason.
Just like they, for the state when they took over welfare from the communities.
When you meet with your legislators, maybe the state should take over the health benefits and pay for that, because they do retire them. That would be a big help to communities.
As long as...
That's it, even if finance committee, you know, the school committee was invited, we would suggest that to them.
As long as they don't do it like the assessment for the MBTA.
Huh?
As long as they do it not like they do the assessment for the MBTA.
I would just like to end like this, just, I think everybody should pay attention as far as what's happening at the state level of government. If you have concerns, reach out to our newly elected state reps that represent the town of Kuschna and push them to help us more, because we need it. Pay attention to what they're voting on and how they vote. Call out on it, I mean, they're serving us, right? They're supposed to be anyway. But it's just...
They're still waiting on this.
It's very frustrating to me, they're still waiting.
But Mr. Alat, he still hasn't responded to me?
No, well, I'll invite them back again next year. And, but I think, like I said, I think this would be the meeting for at least one of them to show up to, so they can see what we go through right now. You know, it was, it was nice we got to express our issues to them.
Oh, we expressed.
One of the state reps, newly elected state reps, knows exactly what you're all facing because he was a town manager and town administrator before he became a state rep.
Yeah, well, it's a big problem. Massachusetts has become the third most expensive state in the country left. So there's a reason...
Quality of life is very high too. So you talk about cost, quality of life, compared with so many other states that are low taxed, the quality of life for the residents is not as good as here. That's why people don't leave Massachusetts. There's a lot of pluses about Massachusetts living, and our people really appreciate, they appreciate, and they don't mind paying, stats show, they don't mind paying the higher taxes. They don't find millionaires running off.
Mr. Hawke, I totally disagree with that.
Yeah, I disagree with you, Mr. Hawke, you do see millionaires leaving.
Yeah, I totally disagree with that.
Oh, yeah, I saw it.
You know something, the revenue has not, the revenue has not decreased.
Ron, you have motion to adjourn?
It's exceeding, the... Millionaire's taxes exceed...
I thought we were done. We were having a real conversation.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, yes, yes. Now can I go back to my conversation?
All in favor?
I don't know.
Okay, before we close, I'll be there.
I have edited all these.
Bringing the red states...
I disagree on that.
I bet they don't call it.
If all they like, who states you're singing?
From, 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 I think, from...
Yeah, so, yeah, I can do it. So the minutes from the meeting on February 12th, 2025, in attendance was Dr. Boushey, myself, Phil Adams, Peep Anoy, Eric Chu, and Kristen Flynn.
Motion to accept the minutes.
Second. All in favor?
Okay. Then the second, sorry, the minutes of September 4th, 2024. In attendance was Mr. Boushey, myself, Peep Anoy, Eric Chu, Kristen Flynn, Eric McGlynn, and Bob St. Jean.
Motion to accept, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So I want to get Mr. Kelly's take, so we can decide if he's gonna be tomorrow or Thursday. Mr. Kelly? You know, Mr. Kelly. We're still on the east end of the floor.
We haven't closed anything yet.
Sorry. We have to do our budget developments. We have to get them done before May 7th. So...
We have a meeting tomorrow.
I'd say Monday.
Are we gonna have like a numbers?
I'd say Monday, have a meeting Monday.
The problem is, two people sitting here and not you on Monday.
How about Tuesday?
I'm in Chicago. You're in Florida.
I'm gone all next week, I'm on vacation.
And I fly back Thursday night. And this is at work, so it's not even like I can...
Roll with order, please.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good, thanks.
I'll call you tomorrow and let you know what you drive to do.
Yep, thank you. Yeah, because we gotta really figure this out. So when, the board is selecting a meeting when?
Probably Friday.
So maybe, maybe we do what we did last year. Push it back two weeks.
Push what back?
If they're meeting, tell them meeting. We may have to.
Can we still do that?
You did last year.
Yeah, but can we still do it today?
When in June did we have it last year? It wasn't the first Monday in June?
That one.
Unless, I mean, so I don't know if we'd have a quorum without...
It was the 17th of June.
Beat me to it.
So it'd be up to you guys to, to, to all, to do deliberations and make your recommendations.
I would suggest you communicate with the three selectmen.
And slide annual town meeting.
And see what they say.
So how far back can we go?
We were at the 17th last year.
June 17th?
I would say make a meeting.
We did June 17th last year?
Last year was, that's when town meeting was.
So if we go, if we look ahead, yeah, because that would give us, that would give us some extra time.
That'd give us the two more weeks.
I think we're gonna need it.
I think we need you guys here.
Because right now, it's set for the second, it would be the 16th.
That's it, cancel your vacations.
I was hoping you guys could...
Not vacationing.
No, no, we could without you, with Sue here, but with the both of you out, we're rudderless.
So we're, so we're looking at June 16th then, because it's a potential town meeting day. So that'd be two weeks.
I'll still be here.
You're here till the 30th plus. You're not going anywhere.
Legislature used to pull the cord out of the clock. And it was 12 o'clock for sometimes two days.
All right, so next meeting, so we're not gonna have anything to vote on tomorrow or Thursday, or make recommendations on something.
So you're gonna, you're gonna be selecting and sliding the town meeting. And that'll give them some time.
I'll have that conversation with them, exactly, that'll give them some time. And then maybe something good happens with the, at the state level. And some, maybe it's a little bit better than we expect.
I look forward to it next.
What are you looking at now then for your next meeting?
We potentially look at...
We have a pushover tomorrow.
No, there's nothing to cover. He's saying next week, every...
Jamie just said there's nothing to vote on either other day this week.
Wednesday, May 14th?
Wednesday, May 14th, just so you know, I cannot be there, I'm in Orlando for work.
Okay.
So I'm just, and I leave on Tuesday, so I could do Monday, the 12th. And I could possibly do Friday, the 16th, if you need me for the quorum.
But I... I don't know if we want to do a meeting on Friday, what about Thursday?
I'm just throwing out when, I'm gone Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday nights.
All right, so, well, we might have to do it without you.
That's, just letting you know ahead of time.
How about everybody else that's sitting here right now?
The 14th?
On the 14th, I'm good.
The schedule's a little open, I'll have to check.
I'm good on the 14th.
Lisa, you good for that?
Um, I think so.
Hey, no one just...
Can I suggest, can I suggest...
Did he go to the, or did he tell me he wasn't gonna be here tonight, I don't even remember?
Can I, can I suggest two dates right next to each other, just in case?
Yeah, I think we're gonna have to.
Yeah.
We're gonna go...
How about, how about May 14th, which is a Wednesday, and the 15th, which is the Thursday?
The 15th, I can do, the 14th I cannot. You may not need it for a quorum, so.
But Pete's already not here.
Yeah, the problem is, Mr. St. Jean is not doing that well.
You still got Kristen and you still got Phil.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we need the, we need one of them, right?
All right, you know what? We're just gonna put, to be determined, we're not gonna set a date yet until I can get a confirmation from everybody about availability.
So the Pentalin dates for this week are done.
So I'm gonna talk to the board's selectmen about pushing the town meeting out a little bit further, and then I'll communicate with everybody to see availability for that. Basically, it's like the mid-May, the week of the 12th through the 16th.
If something happens, Mike, and it needs to get moved to the following week, I have available every evening after that. It's just that one week.
Yeah, because we could even go that, the following week, Jamie, correct?
Well, I've gotta find, I'm gonna talk to the printer tomorrow and say, if we push off town meeting till this date, when do I have to get it to you?
Okay, we have motion to adjourn on meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, good night.
Mike, have you had my wish?
Oh, my gosh.